A little closer.
Thanks, Dr. Perry. We learned so much about volcanoes.
Well, I hope this information gives you your answer.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
We know Mount Luminous is a cinder cone, and that means it doesn't even have lava.
That means our hypothesis is wrong.
Well, I don't think we have enough information yet to change our hypothesis. Let's go do some more research and experimentation.
Let's get back to the treehouse.
What's up? Could the volcano be causing the red sky? Could it be that all colors other than red are being absorbed by something? Don't miss the exciting conclusion of The Case of the Mysterious Red Light.
You're very close now. Answer these questions, and you will solve the Treehouse Detective's latest mystery. What do researchers do at the NASA cave? What are two things that affect how far wind can carry particles? How does the jet stream help the Treehouse detectives solve their problem?
What are you doing? Magic?
No, this is actually a science experiment. I punched a hole in this cup and poured water in.
What happens?
Turn the lights down and watch this.
Wow, that looks like a stream of light.
The light is Benny, just like the experiment Dr. Shen told us at the Jefferson Lab.
It's neat, but we still need to figure out why the sunrises and sunsets are so red.
I think pollution could be the cause.
What's making the pollution? I don't think it's the volcanoes, because they're too far away.
Maybe wind's blowing it our way.
Yeah, right. I don't think the wind can blow things this far.
Not unless it had a lot of hot air, unlike someone we know.
I know you're not talking about me. I'll go over to the problem board and try to figure out what we need to do next.
We know the sky is still red. We know that light travels in waves, and that it's also a ray. And the light we see is only a small part of the spectrum.
And we also know that light reflects and refracts.
Pollution can cause red skies. Volcanoes cause some air pollution when they erupt dust and ash.
We need to know how far ash can travel through the air, and if it can travel long distances. But how do we find out?
We need someone who knows a lot about wind. Wind has to do with weather. I'm sure NASA has a weather expert. Let's go to the NASA website.
Wow, look, NASA has a really cool place called the Cave.
It's a computer system that we can use to look at weather in 3D. I'll go over there.
This must be the cave.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jennifer Olsen.
I'm one of the Treehouse detectives. We're trying to learn more about wind. We want to know if volcanic ash can blow all the way from the Pacific Ocean to Virginia.
I'm looking at some data in the cave right now. Would you like to step in with me and take a look?
I've heard of the cave. Sure, let's go.
First, you'll need to take off your shoes and put on the glasses.
Wow, this is neat.
We're looking at wind vectors over the Pacific Ocean in the US.
What's a wind vector?
Do you see the yellow arrows?
Yeah, lots of them.
Those are wind vectors. They show which direction the wind is blowing. Their size tells you how fast the wind is blowing. The longer the arrow is, the faster the wind speed is.
What about the wind vector's way up there?
These vectors are up at 12 miles over the earth's surface. That's well above the weather.
It looks like all those arrows are pointing in the same direction. Is that normal for high altitudes?
Yes, it is. Notice that these arrows are mostly pointing from the west toward the east. That's a zonal direction in the global wind pattern.
How fast are they blowing?
At 12 miles up, most wind speeds are between 40 and 50 miles per hour. At these altitudes, there's also something that we call a jet stream.
Oh, you mean the white stuff that comes out the back of a jet we see?
Good guess, but the jet stream is a river of very fast-flowing air, where speeds can reach several hundred miles per hour. That's as fast as a major tornado. Let's step outside and go to my computer lab.
Okay. So what's the second thing that affects how far wind can transport particles?
It's the lifetime of a particle. Scientists have a tremendous amount of data available to them to study things like lifetimes of gases and particles, and much of that data is stored here at the Atmospheric Science Data Center.
I didn't know particles had a life.
Yes, the lifetime refers to how long the particle stays in the atmosphere. For particles near the surface, ash and dust, will be rained out of the atmosphere within a matter of days.
So volcanic ash would not have a very long lifetime?
Not necessarily. If the ash were injected up in the stratus, in the atmosphere, near the stratosphere, its lifetime could be very long, in the order of weeks and months.
Would zonal winds then be able to carry the ash to Virginia?
Yes, it could. If a volcano injected particles into the stratosphere, it could be transported for very long distances by the very fast wind speeds of the jet stream.
Yeah, but the Pacific Ocean is so far away. That would take forever.
Let's do a quick calculation. It's about 7,000 miles from here to Mount Luminous. If we take a typical atmospheric wind speed of about 40 miles per hour, what do you get?
175 hours.
175 hours to transport the dust to Virginia. That's about a week. In fact, the dust plume could be transported completely around the globe in about a month.
The sky is so deep red, is there anything about this eruption that is different?
Yes, there is. I read that this volcano also injected a lot of sulfur dioxide and water vapor into the stratosphere. These two gases react together to form tiny sulfuric acid particles.
We learned from Dr. Paluski that particles scatter the blue light.
That's right, and these particles are small enough that they act with the molecules in the atmosphere to scatter even more of the blue light from the sun's rays.
Thanks, Dr. Olsen.
Sure.
I think we now have a new hypothesis. Here it is. If the zonal winds brought the volcanic ash to this area, we would have deep-red sunsets and sunrises. Smart thinking, huh?
Matt said the cave was really cool. I wish you could have one here in the treehouse. I think that would be a little too high-tech, even for our treehouse.
You know what, guys, I've been thinking. Our hypothesis is incorrect.
Why?
Well, you remember when Dr. Olsen told us that the zonal winds would bring the ash and dust to our area in about seven days?
Yes.
Well, the really red sunsets and sunrises came only three days after Mount Luminous erupted.
So it couldn't be from the volcano, because it happened too soon.
But guys, you're forgetting. Dr. Olsen also told us about jet streams and how they travel really fast. Couldn't the ash and dust have gotten here by the jet stream?
I think we need to find out more about jet streams.
Here comes Bianca.
Here comes Bianca.
Are you guys talking about jet streams?
Yes.
The weatherman from Wavy TV Tank came to our school last week. He thought if we had any questions, to contact him. I'll email him and see if we can meet him.
Thanks for seeing us, Mr. Eco. We need to learn more about a jet stream.
Sure, I can show you a jet stream.
You have one here?
Only on a screen. What do you guys know about jet streams?
We know that a jet stream is like a river of wind, way up high in the atmosphere.
And that they can travel up to a few hundred miles per hour.
That's great.
Is the jet stream always in the same place?
No, let me show you. Actually, guys, there are multiple jet streams. So let's take a look at a couple of them. We have what we call the Northern Jet, and that is outlined in the blue. That's responsible for a lot of the cold air that comes down to the east coast. And then we have what we call the Subtropical Jet. That is outlined in the red right here, and that's responsible for bringing in a lot of warm, moist air for the east coast.
We need to know if the jet stream was passing over our area the week that Mount Luminous erupted.
Sure, let's go look at the data. Actually, look, over the past five to seven days, notice how the jet stream just goes further and further south. And what that does is it brings in all types of systems, and it's basically just below us, which lets everything drain down into our region. So you can see as the jet stream goes further south, all of the clouds and all the debris comes right down on top of us.
That has to be it, then. If the jet stream traveled at 100 miles per hour, and Mount Luminous is 7,000 miles away, then it would take 70 hours for the ash to reach our area.
With 24 hours in a day, three days would be 72 hours. That means that the jet stream could cause the sunrises and sunsets to be red.
I think you guys have solved the mystery.
Thanks, Mr. Eco. We really appreciate your help.
Anytime for the Treehouse detectives.
I'm so glad that we finally solved our mystery.
But I still think there's one last thing we need to do. Let's email our kids' club members and ask them if they've been seeing redder sunrises and sunsets.
That's a good idea. That way, we'll know it's not just happening in our area.
Great. Also ask them when they first noticed the change.
Okay. We're getting a lot of emails from all over the US. A lot of our kids' club members are saying that they are seeing redder sunrises and sunsets.
Let's organize the emails by state and see when everyone first saw the unusual skies.
Wow, there's a pattern with the states of the west coast. This email says they saw redder skies only two days after Mount Luminous erupted.
The center of the US saw the unusual skies about three days after the eruption.
Except for the school in Dallas. Their email says they saw the redder skies just two days after the eruption. That's strange.
Well, remember, the jet stream did travel down into their area before it came up to us in Virginia.
You're right. I think that these emails remove all doubt that it was the eruption of Mount Luminous that caused the unusual red sunrises and sunsets. Hi, Dr. D.
Hi. Did you find a solution to your red sky problem yet?
We're pretty sure that we have.
And we did it together with the help of the scientific methods. And we learned a lot about light along the way.
We learned the way light travels.
We learned a lot about frequency and wavelength. Our first hypothesis was that there was a lot of low-frequency waves in the sky.
There was really nothing wrong with our statement. It just didn't explain why the sky was red.
At first, we thought that the explanation might be that light was bouncing around in the sky, but that was just a wild guess.
You then told us about transparent, translucent, and opaque. Thought that clouds might be the solution.
And then we thought about pollution, but what could be causing the pollution?
Then we really got sidetracked. We heard a report about a volcano called Mount Luminous that was erupting. We decided that the red could somehow be connected to the red lava.
But we weren't listening to the report very carefully, because it clearly stated that there was dust everywhere.
And then we missed the big clue. I mean, we thought that since the volcano was so far away, that it had nothing to do with our problem.
Even though our idea about volcanoes was way off, we decided to study them.
And we were talking about volcanic ash, and how it can stay in the air for months at a time and travel thousands of miles. And we began to get back in the right direction.
So we didn't give up. We went back to our hypothesis of pollution and tried to see if it was the volcano that was giving off pollution, or aerosols.
We investigated wind and wind patterns, and found that aerosols can be transported long distances.
We learned that the higher up in the atmosphere aerosols are, the longer they can stay up there.
Most importantly, we learned from Dr. Olsen that it was possible for the aerosols to be scattered from the volcano all the way to Virginia, about 7,000 miles away.
And don't forget, the jet stream helped to draw the aerosols to us even quicker.
And the fact that Mount Luminous gave off a sulfur dioxide gas also helped to explain why the sunrises and sunsets were such a deep red.
That's great. You kept on track, researched carefully, kept an open mind, revised your hypothesis, and finally come up with a possible explanation.
It was fun and a lot of hard work. There just wasn't some magical solution, that's for sure.
It was a lot of hard work. But I believe you finally have come up with the most likely solution to the red sky problem. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now, for my final magic act, I'm going to make this all disappear.
Are you still at that? Give it up.
Please. Abracadabra, send them back to their homes! Hey, I think I did it. This is great.
Jacob, we're still here. You made us disappear, but we're still stuck in the treehouse.
Try it again, please.
Psst, come here. Is this magic or just an illusion? See you next time.
Yes, look at that.
I didn't mess it up early. I don't know why I'm getting it. All right, bye, PJ. Good luck, man.
All right, thanks.
Don't laugh, I mean...
Couldn't you hold it or something?
I was holding it the whole time I was talking.
Let's see what Dr. Tech...
Dr. D.
You took this picture for my dad and his... Okay, clearly, get over here and quick, picture taken. So you want me to be, like, holding it on the plane?
It's fun to be a good neighbor. So say hi to your new neighbors at the LA Zoo. And bring Grandpa. They've got a walking buddy for him, too. They've expanded, so there's even more to see and do. Don't wonder who's here, 'cause just for kicks, they've got birds on sticks, ready and waiting to greet the whole family with a smile. A great day is to be had for any child. Just like any good neighbor, they've all put their best foot forward and jumping at the chance to entertain you. Listening carefully and on the lookout, they're just hanging around for you. Hey, wanna play peek-a-boo? Whatever you do, make sure Mom and Dad come early, 'cause they're certainly ready to say hi to you. And this invitation comes from your good neighbors here at the LA Zoo.
Hi, I'm Gina Ray, and this is my dog, Whippet. We're from Winnetka. Get it, girl. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. This is our city and our channel.
Good morning, good morning. If, uh, everyone could please take a seat. Shhh. Please take a seat. Today is Tuesday, January 22nd. I want to welcome you to, uh, City Hall. And this is, uh, your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you call a roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscainos, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weeza Corretz, Krikorian Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez, Rue Smith, Wesson. Eleven members present and accord, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Smith moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonin moves. Bloomingfield seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Okay, why don't we all rise? Let's have Mr. Smith lead us in our flag salute today.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everyone please rise, place your hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Let's, uh, continue. Uh, Madam Clerk, with the agenda.
Mr. President, items one through three are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all three items.
Then continue.
Items four through fourteen are items for which public hearings have been held. However, there are requests to hold items nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Let's hold those items and let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. So let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Continue.
And, Mr. President, the ordinances for items four, five, and six will be held over one week unless reconsidered with twelve members present.
Well, I am very optimistic we will hit that number today. Mr. Bonin? Well, no, if we could take Mr. Bonin off my screen. Okay, let's go through the next set of items.
Items fifteen through thirty-three are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on all items.
All right, let's hold them and move forward.
And, Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, let me, I saw Mr. Previn earlier. Mr. Previn? If you come forward. Mr. Previn has items one, two, three, twenty-three through twenty... Thirty-three. And then his general public comment. Welcome, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, uh, Council President Wesson. It's Eric Previn from CD2. I'm on the Neighborhood Council in Studio C, but of course, today I'm speaking on behalf of myself. And, uh, you got a nice naming item in there. You're, I think it's Lynn Hilfenhouse is being named. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield, for, uh, some, they're naming something after her out in the third district, CD3. And, uh, it's reminiscent of the naming controversy that the Daily News had been reporting regarding, I guess Mitch Englander has pulled a Fuentes and stepped off.
Can we get on the item, Mr. Previn?
No, I'm talking about Hilfenhouse, who's being named in three. And it's related to the naming and the withdrawal thereof out in, I believe it's CD12, uh, of the, now, there's not been any official un-naming, but there's a discussion of un-naming the Englander Bloom facility because, uh, of the egregious, uh, failure in the, you know, dropping the commitment to serve the public and costing what's going to be $2.4 million, sir, which is an enormous amount of money to have a special election. And what it's going to result in is out of the next twenty-two months, we're going to have twenty months of election time. So as soon as the special election is resolved, they're going to re-up and have a, another regular election at our expense.
Mr. Previn, we don't understand what item you're on. Would you please help us understand?
Sure, sure. Uh, David Rue on item twenty-three is looking to put some scooters and skateboards into service in the L.A. Municipal Code for the Parks. And I think this is responsive to what the public expects because, you know, they're here to stay. We have to put the helmets on and protect. But here's a detail for Rue, who does not like developers but adores lawyers. We've got to make sure that the liability is not being, uh, tested over towards Krikorian and the group upstairs, who then pay out egregiously, uh, on claims. So we want kids to be able to use the stuff appropriately, but we don't want the group that has put him in office, which is the lawyers. I mean, he will say, "I doesn't like developers," or money, or he wants to ban contributions from developers, but the man has taken legal money.
No, Mr. Previn, you're not on the item now.
Well, I'm on the scooter item, sir. And scooter guys have money too.
You really are.
Well, it's about legalizing scooters.
Come on, Mr. Previn.
Well, I'm for it.
I gave you your item, so stay on those items.
This is bad. All right, twenty-nine, sir, is Project Restore. I don't think anybody loves Project Restore more than you, sir. But when you rent out the entire, uh, John Ferraro Chambers and the Rotunda to a private group, it's reminiscent of the request to have debates in here in the off-time during election. Because this is a beautiful place, it's wired for discussion. Why don't we use this facility for open debates with the candidates? And that would work nicely, um, on the regular election schedule. Because we, once again, I think the people are now starting to realize that if Nicole Burnson, who's a woman, would be the third councilwoman in Los Angeles, that's something I'm proud to say.
Mr. Previn, get back on the item.
She concerned, Greg would be the hero on that.
In fact, let's give, uh, Mr. Previn his general public comment. Now, Mr. Previn, all you have to do is stay on the item.
I want to cooperate with you. I will go general public comment. Fair, fair enough. We have to, we have to try to communicate with one another, which is why I'm so proud of UTLA, sir. Because this group, um, has made a lot of noise. In fact, it's continuing right through today's meeting. But the, the idea there, I think, is, is that in our city and county and state, we're underfunding, uh, the most important public servants. And we're leaving them with egregious realities, like forty-five or more students in a classroom. And it's just not tenable, sir. Uh, it's particularly not tenable when you are allowing $2.4 million out the door to the sanitation group out in CD12, who are going to retain twenty months of expensive campaigning during a time when Englander, Kenobi, and Allen will feed like, like the, you know how in Africa, the gazelles come over to the water and drink when there's no water elsewhere? They will just gobble up probably a million dollars in the public matching fund on top of the $2.4. So you're hearing it, you're hearing it today, Bloomingfield. $3.4 million of the taxpayer money while the teachers are in the yard.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Mr. Sean Murphy? One through three in general public comment?
Uh, yeah. I had a good time at the King. I'm three, I'm supporting. Uh, give me my general public comment because I have to go.
Give him his general.
Uh, do you remember my sister Sheila Rogers? She transitioned around the New Year. I lost my sister. Uh, uh, Parthenia. Parthenia needs to be repaired. It gets flooded during the rainy, during the rain, when it's constant heavy rains. Uh, will you please try to repair it? Uh, nobody can walk to Parthenia. It's like a, it's like a river. Uh, that's about it. I just wanted, I had a good time at the Kingdom Day Parade yesterday.
Good to see you.
Yeah. I lost my sister, if you remember, Sheila Rogers. She transitioned two days before the New Year. The funeral was two weeks ago. I'd been suffering through my sister's loss. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sadio, would you be ready? Or do you need a few more, few more minutes? Okay, let's go to Ms. McAllister. Items, uh, twenty-four and twenty-five, and then general public comment. So she'll get two minutes and then another minute. Hello, Ms. McAllister.
Good morning, Mr. President. Um, let me start with item number twenty-four. Request for authority to issue tax exempt multi-formular, multifamily revenue bonds, ten point seven million. Now, it's at 2600 South Hoover Street. Now, here's the deal. You are asking for two hundred and ni, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and eight dollars per unit. Now, we're talking about studios, three hundred and, three hundred to three hundred and seventy-five square feet. One bedrooms, four fifty to five hundred feet. Two bedrooms, seven hundred to eight hundred square feet. And you want $291,000, one hundred and eight dollars to build these small units where you can walk in and take about ten steps and you're at the window. This is where the money is going, people. This is the biggest con I've ever seen. We need an investigation of the City Council. It does not take $291,000 to build a, a, some three hundred by three hundred and seventy-five square foot, um, studio apartments. This is ridiculous. Now, item number twenty-four. Here, we're talking about, you're giving away all of this money. Okay, this is, uh, Measure Eight money. And you, you're giving a lot of it to the L.A. Rise Partnership with the City-County Workforce Development. You know the workforce development mostly trains illegal aliens. And they give illegal aliens housing. Now, here's the deal. That H money is supposed to be used for affordable housing, okay? Now, what the shelters are doing, you're giving all this money to shelters and not building any affordable housing. The Askenaziums, they run and make money off these shelters. They make those people who live in the shelters give all of their SSI check and their welfare checks to them every month. Every month. They take their money so when the people get out, they have no money to even, to get, to get an apartment. Okay, we need to stop this. We need to hold these, um, Askenaziums accountable for what they're doing to the people in this City Council. And I understand you guys are under investigation.
Let's give her one minute.
Now, I'm concerned about this border crisis that we have in Nancy Pelosi. Nancy Pelosi comes out of California. And if you go to San Francisco to make you cry, okay? Tourism is down very, very much in San Francisco. People on the street defecating, urinating, seeping on the street. And now, we have drug addicts in, in, in Congress. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's a known fact. Some of them are in rehab. They're drug addicts and alcoholics. And we know what drug addicts do. They'll prostitute themselves and their children to get money. That's what they're doing in Congress. They're prostituting this nation. I believe they're getting money from these drug cartels. That's why they don't want the border, because the drugs won't be able to get in. And they're getting money from legalized prostitution. In California, you have decriminated child prostitution, SB 1322. One other thing, they've taken the agendas out of this meeting. That is against the Brown Act, Section 54954.2. You're supposed to have agendas in this meeting. And if you have a website, it's supposed to be on the website. Uh, there are no agendas. I was here the other day, there were no agendas. You're trying to keep the people, people, go to lacity.org and click on City Calendar if you want to see it online. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll look into that, Ms. McAllister. Ms. Ramirez? Ms. Ramirez, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-one, and your general public comment.
Could you repeat them, please?
You have, uh, items twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty-one in general public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, thank you very much. God. Number twenty-four. Thank you very much. Oh, yai, yai. Um, please, um, don't lie. The law-abiding Americans and baby boomers and senior citizens are the aging group that are on the streets homeless and poverty. You and Mike Few or Eric Garcetti are money laundering the millions of dollars. And your Jew mates, um, all are there giving the money to George Soros. So why don't you and George Soros take a matzo ball laced with jalapeno up your asses? Get your facts right. Number twenty-five, another, you are still subsidizing, subsidizing these cabrones, chongos, shit wetbacks, and gangbangers. That's why we have housing problems. And these bonds aren't going to help us either way until you stand and enforce the rule of law. No wetbacks and no gangbangers to be housed anywhere. Um, and number twenty-eight. Um, relative to the City Council Standing Committees, um, resolve to combine the Arts, Entertainment, Parks, and River Committee, and Health, Education, Neighborhood Council Committees, and all these wonderful functions? No. Why don't you resolve to combine and enforce and bring public safety? We need public safety. Crime is escalating. We have an epidemic. We have a gang and drug epidemic. We are being, basically, we are in a chokehold by these goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers and criminal monopolies. So resolve that first before you start anything else.
Okay, move to another item.
And number thirty-one, sir. Um, oh, number thirty-one. Street beautification. Deport the gangbangers and wetbacks and you'll have street beautification. Um, and once you, uh, restore, you said Project Restore? What Project Restore? It doesn't elaborate. It's vague and ambiguous. We should restore Los Angeles by deporting the goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers and building the goddamn wall.
All right, let's give her her one minute.
That's what we need, a wall.
Let's give her her one minute.
God bless Trump and America, man.
Go ahead. General public comment.
Thank you, sir, very much. And again, God bless Donald Trump. And all the gang stalkers around him are going to go to prison, including, um, Mueller. Now, uh, Mr. FBI Mueller, if you're having a sexual, um, encounter with Nancy Pelosi for the nineteen, for thirteen years, you know, that's a conflict of interest. You neither should be involved in harassing Donald Trump. And, um, ladies and gentlemen, on 1/15/19, Sheila Kuhl and Mark Ridley Thomas kicked me out of the County Board of Supervisors simply because I said we have a crime epidemic. The homeless women are being attacked and violated, robbed, robbed, robbed. We have to spend our money replacing everything by the goddamn wetbacks, gangbangers, and the fucking niggers from Skid Row and everywhere else. So I got thrown out. Why? Because it's the truth, they're black and they're niggers. What's the problem? So I was thrown out. Now, he should look at his son Sebastian. Sebastian is a crook and he can't keep his pants on.
Thank you, your time's expired. Your time's expired. Your time's expired. Your time's expired. Okay, uh, that ends, uh, multi-comment. Do I have Matt, Matt Palma? Matt Palma, if you're here? General public comment?
Is it just one minute?
Yes, for general public comment, yes.
Okay, I'll make this quick. Uh, thank you, council, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Matt Palma. I'm a supervising engineer employed by the County Sanitation Districts located in Whittier, California. I have more than twenty-two years of service with this agency. And I'm here to speak to you about more, more than eight hundred fellow employees across six bargaining units, ranging from clerical, technical support, to professional accountant, scientists, and engineers. We oversee a vast infrastructure of solid waste and wastewater operations in seventy-eight cities, including this one. Our management is not coming to the table. Okay, it's not all unlike what's going on with the teachers. By the way, Local 66 supports the teachers. Um, our management admits there's no financial reason for the pay cut. Basically, what's happened is in the past, we agreed to forego COLAs to get our employer-provided member contribution paid on our behalf. Now, management wants to take that back. In fact, most agencies within California have already made a swap for their employees. So what can you do? We're asking each of you to sign a letter, asking the sanitation district's management to immediately withdraw from the unreasonable position of a pay cut. I don't want to leave here today without thanking Councilmember Buscano.
Thank you, your time is up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Joe.
All right, that concludes, uh, general public comment. So we've, we've ended multi and general. So, uh, Madam Clerk, why don't we vote on reconsideration? We have twelve members.
And that would be reconsideration of the ordinances for items four, five, and six.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Let's now vote on the items themselves. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
I'd now like to recognize Mr. Gilbert Sadio for a very important presentation.
Way back. Back to the fences. Good morning, Mr. President. How are you?
On top of the world, Mr. Sadio.
We'll start with the video.
Swing and a drive. Absolute madness.
Uh, for me, uh, there's never doubt, uh, or question that, uh, if I have free time, uh, I want to use it to, uh, you know, go over to a school and visit kids or get into a hospital and, uh, brighten up someone who's, uh, battling a tough time in their life and, and their family, or, uh, you know, going out on a baseball field and playing catch with a little leaguer and, uh, giving them a memory that they can talk about for the rest of their life. You guys ready to get some glasses? You guys ready to get some glasses? All right. I think we're good. I think it's mixed up here. Serving lunches to these fine folks here who, you know, are in need. And we're down here helping out the community. There you go. There you go. Enjoy. I want to thank you guys all from the bottom of my heart for everything you do, for everything you sacrifice, for serving our country, fighting for our freedoms. Um, because of everything that you've done, I get to call this place right here, my workplace, my home, my playground. To come in here and help lift these kids up, they're going through some tough times. Obviously, being in a hospital, not where they want to be, and to take their mind off that stuff, just for a little bit.
That is awesome, dude. Thank you. Little tattoo.
I brought these, uh, blank, all-white Adidas cleats into the hospital for these kids to decorate or design, uh, for me to wear. You know, I'm just trying to do my part and take advantage of the platform that, that us Major League Baseball players are given. I hope to continue to grow and, and get better and, and find more ways to get out there and, and make an impact in, in people's lives and our community.
Mr. President, it's hard to follow that video. I was going to say that, uh, the blue is back. It's gone with the red, and now the blue is back. I want to also, uh, say my favorite for everybody, get ready. You know, Martin Luther King, uh, Day was yesterday. And, uh, Martin Luther King had a, a great, uh, uh, interest in sports. As you recall, uh, Jackie Robinson was playing, uh, for the Dodgers during the, uh, uh, the plateau of the Civil Rights Movement. So Martin Luther King's favorite saying with, uh, respect to sports was, "Let's go Dodgers." "Let's go Dodgers." "Let's go Dodgers." Thank you. Justin Turner is a, uh, incredible young man. He's here with his beautiful wife that he, uh, just loves.
Let me stop you, Mr. Sadio. Ladies and gentlemen, Justin Turner. Let's give him a round of applause. I mean, whoa.
And his beautiful wife, Courtney. Let's hear it. So I've got these incredible notes that my team put together for me. You know, Justin, uh, played with Fullerton, which has, uh, with USC and UCLA, an incredible, uh, baseball history and tradition here in Southern California. We must, uh, train most of, of, uh, Major League Baseball. Uh, because the stars that come out of those three programs are incredible. And he's, came out of, uh, Fullerton and was, uh, on their World Series baseball team in 2004, drafted by the Reds. Uh, and then later returned home, uh, to play here for the Dodgers. He's been the, uh, co-most valuable player, uh, been a star. But today is Justin Turner Day. And for me, all those things are great, but what's greater is his commitment to community and to service. Uh, I know this young man, and it's an honor to represent both the Dodgers, to have him in my district. Because you get a chance to see our community leaders, uh, a little more, uh, up close. And with Justin, you know, he's got this image. And you see him, uh, out there, and, and he is such an incredible athlete, and God has blessed him. And he has, uh, as I said, a lovely wife who keeps him on track and on program. But, uh, he nods. But, uh, most importantly is his commitment to community and to service. Uh, you saw him at Children's Hospital. As you know, I've been working with Padres contra el cancer since you and I were in the legislature. And he does not miss an event. Uh, this is not a promotion. This is not something he does to help, uh, elevate the image of the team. This is something he does from his heart. Uh, he does this all the time. Uh, you don't have to do more than ask and let him know where and when the event is, and he's there. Uh, he shows up. Uh, he has an incredible commitment to the city, uh, to the young people in the city, to veterans, uh, to the challenges that confront us with homelessness. He is somebody that, uh, is really special. And when you think of the team, you think of their leadership, you think of their competitiveness, how blessed we are here in Southern California to have greatness, uh, in our presence, you have to think of Justin, because, because he is a really special human being. you have to think of Justin, because, because he is a really special human being. I spent my day yesterday, uh, Day of Service in Tijuana, and we went down to, uh, look at the situation with respect to migrants and to take, uh, blankets and toiletries, et cetera. And I tell you, Justin is this type of person who does things like that. And when you see him, and you see the highlights, uh, he doesn't just do it when the cameras are around, he just, he does it all the time. And I just, uh, Justin, one more last time, let me say thank you for what you do for children with cancer, uh, thank you for what you do with their families, and thank you for what you do with the city. For those reasons, we are happy, uh, to declare this Justin Turner Day in the City of Los Angeles. Justin, we love you very much, we love your family, and thank you for being a great Dodger and a great human being. God bless you.
Justin, uh, if, if I may call you, uh, Justin, in fact, my youngest son's name is Justin, so I, I'm gonna call you Justin anyway.
He's on the right track, then.
So before I allow the other members to speak, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for the moments and the memories. I want to thank you for all of us holding our breath when you and your teammates seem to just always fight back, and you in particular, when it looks like it's, it's all over but the shouting, and then you take one out, left field, or... So we really, you know, a lot of us don't have the ability to do what you do, so we kind of live through you, so thank you. And if we're kind of living through you, all of the great things that you and your wife do for children and other people in need, I think that that makes us, uh, that makes us pretty good. So again, we are honored that you both would take the time to come to City Council, to give us all a, a thrill and, and a giggle. And with that said, and, I'm gonna call on the next speaker, but before I call on you, it has been, uh, requested by every member of this council that you do not sing. So I'd now like to recognize Joe Buscagno.
I, I would respect that, of course, Mr. President. We don't want to lose our guest here. So nonetheless, I want to, uh, stand and recognize, and maybe even amend, this, uh, Justin Turner Day, to read, Mr. Sadio, Justin and Courtney Turner Day, because it really takes a partnership to do what you need to do to give back to our communities. Um, you know, JT, this is your day. So for Justin and Courtney Turner, you guys can agree on what you want to do, uh, trim a tree, fill a pothole, you want to draft legislation, you have a moment to do that, do it right now, maybe name a street after a friend of yours. But nonetheless, uh, we honor you today, and the work that you both do in our community goes unmatched. And you, we have, um, you've electrified our city, uh, on your commitment to not only on the field, but off the field. You have been a, a great role model. We have the Buscagno Dodger delegation sitting behind you here. Uh, you have future Dodger baseball players, future softball players. Um, and let me just say, on behalf of my family, on behalf of this entire city, you've led by example. You've shown what you can do on the field by, um, of course, these last two World Series appearances have been incredible for our city. As you know, we're gonna bring that trophy home this year, and, uh, we're not, uh, we're gonna continue to fight for that, uh, world championship, you and your team. But colleagues, I think it's important for us, um, I know, Mr. Sadio, you mentioned it, but to highlight your partnerships. Uh, if you look at the Dream Center, helping those families in need, just right down the street from here, seventeen strong, helping those kids with cancer, Paralyzed Veterans of America, ensuring that we don't forget about those who paid the ultimate sacrifice, who were injured while serving and making the sacrifice and protecting our freedoms. The JTF Helping Children Foundation, uh, for helping those kids experiencing illnesses and diseases by letting them know that loo- losing is not an option. Um, we have school-aged children here today, and because of this strike, and thankfully, they've come to some resolution today, and they'll be going back to school. But the lessons that you have learned, as you have taught our kids today, the lessons of community service, of, um, partnering with, um, our public service, um, partnering with our, uh, community-based organizations, a lesson to give back and be kind and love one another, is a, the amazing lesson that we can give, even though they're not in the classrooms today, you are teaching our kids and our students the important, the value of giving back to our community. So with that, we recognize you both, we thank you, we love you, we bless you, and let's bring home a championship this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. So, before I call the next member, members, let's all beard up, members? I think every member of the council has a beard. If you're bold enough, beard up, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Paul Krikorian Beard List.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. That's not gonna happen, but thank you. Thank you. Um, but I do want to say, uh, first of all, thank you, Mr. Sadio, for allowing us to honor, uh, Justin and Courtney today. And, and Justin, um, I'm a goofy Dodger fan, and like many of my colleagues, and, um, none of the Dodgers, uh, are higher on my list, uh, than, than you. And, um, it's for a lot of reasons. Obviously, we're all familiar with that great swing that we just saw in the video and, and watching those home runs. We're familiar with your, you know, All-Star season in twenty-seventeen, and the incredible performance you had in the National League Championship Series that year. And, and everybody honors you for the critically important role that you play for the Dodgers, that we recognize when you're out especially, and, and how big of a role you've played in the Dodgers' success over the years. But I just want to talk for a moment, as Mr. Buscagno did, about how much you've inspired this city as well. Um, you've inspired the city, first of all, because in a time of, um, celebrity, and in a time when, um, athletes are seen as being somehow different than the rest of us, you've been a hero for the everyday guy. Um, you've been that, that bread-and-butter player who, you know, we all think that we could maybe be someday, and, and so for that reason alone, I think you've inspired the city. But much more than that, you've demonstrated grit like few others in this game. Uh, a guy who, you know, basically was, was undrafted originally, drafted in the twenty-ninth round, I think, your, your first time around, then drafted in the seventh round, you fought your way through difficult seasons, year after year after year, until you reached this level. And then you fought through injury after injury, and came back and continued to be that critical cog that the Dodgers have needed to succeed. And so your toughness, your grit, your persistence in pursuing these goals, that should inspire all of us in whatever field of endeavor we're in. But beyond that, it's what you've done off the field, uh, together with Courtney, setting up the, the Justin Turner Foundation. Um, you've made a lasting difference, which will make a difference for people's families for generations to come. Long after you're retired from baseball, people will still be bene- homeless veterans who are no longer homeless, uh, and their families, because of you, will continue to benefit. Kids who've struggled with the sorts of life-changing diseases, um, horrendous things that no family should ever have to go through, their families are going to benefit and continue to benefit, and their children will benefit long after you've been retired from baseball. And the kids in, you know, all over Los Angeles who wouldn't have an opportunity to participate in baseball, but for your contributions and your work in supporting youth baseball, and, and the lives that will be changed because of that as well. You know, this is the sort of thing that lasts long after the shouting is over, loud, long after the applause dies down. Those lives will continue to be improved and changed because of you. And for all of those reasons, um, we honor you, and we are inspired by, by you, and we thank you for the great presence that you've had, not only as a member of the Los Angeles Dodgers, but as a member of this community as well. Thank you, Justin.
All right. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. Sadio, thank you so much for bringing Justin Turner and his lovely wife Courtney in council chambers today, because this gives me an opportunity to thank you publicly, and I see Clint from the Dream Centers here, my friend Clint is here, for all that you do in the community that I represent in the thirteenth district. The Dream Center is in Silver Lake, and, um, I have a many-years relationship with all of the wonderful things they do for the constituents that I am so privileged to serve. And I, I know that along with you and Clayton Kershaw and many others, the Dodgers have a home at the Dream Center, because you do so many wonderful things, uh, for the parishioners there and the families, uh, who are in such need. And i- it really, really represents a class act when someone does something with their fame, uh, for the greater good. And, uh, I can think of no other greater example, uh, than what you do for the Dream Center and the those that they serve. And also, there's no other batter that I love to watch, the way you stand while you're waiting for that ball. I've never seen anything like it. I don't know how it is, uh, just possible for the, for the, uh, the human frame to stand that way, and then for you to connect with the ball in that way. It sort of defies, uh, all known laws of, of nature. Uh, but it's great, you're a great player, uh, we love watching you, uh, and again, you're a class act, and thanks for coming to City Hall, so we can celebrate all of the great things that you continue to do. Congratulations.
Well said. Well said, Mr. O'Farrell. Let's now go to Mr., uh, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Justin, it is a great honor to have you here in council, so that we can recognize you, uh, in the way that you are deserving of. As a kid from, you know, from the San Fernando Valley, I rem- you know, I grew up in the area of Fernando Valenzuela and Manny Mota, and they had such an incredible spirit to give back to the community, and I think you are reflective and emulate that in the same way, which is part of the Dodger organization. And I want to say thank you so much for being a representation of that, of what it means to be a Dodger in Los Angeles. You have picked up where many of these legends have left off and continue to give back, and I just want to say, it is really an honor to have you here in council, but to really just say thank you for the work that you've done and committed yourself to off the field. And of course, we are very proud of the work you do on the field. It has been, uh, it has been especially wonderful to share with my family, going to, uh, to the series games and just watching you. It, uh, you definitely ignite a fire on the field, and every time you come up to the bat, it's, or come up to the plate, it has been a real honor to watch you, uh, in this Dodger organization and to bring such tremendous pride to our city. I thank you so very much for your work.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. Krikorian says he's a goofy fan, so why aren't you wearing this? I don't get that. Uh, but in all seriousness, everybody's, I gotta take this off. It's really, uh, I don't know how you live with that, anyway, but I, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna take it off. I just want to, uh, say everyone's committed on your community service, and, and that's kind of what the Dodger organization has lived on for a long time. The Dodgers have always been connected to this community, no matter who the owners were, is an integral part of our community. I grew up sitting behind the monster fans at the Dodgers, at the Coliseum, when the Dodgers first moved here, and fell in love with Duke Snyder and Wally Moon and Gil Hodges and those great teams that we had in the early sixties that won the World Series. Um, and LA embraced this team, it, it fell in love with this team. Then we had the great teams of the eight with Ron Say and, and Steve Garvey and, and the great homerun by Kirk Gibson, which lives in Dodger history forever, but we lost that for a long time. And I want to say, and maybe I'm out of line, but I think you personally brought back the excitement and the love of the Dodgers in this community. The way you address yourself when you get at the plate, it's almost like watching Babe Ruth pointing to the, the outfield, saying, "That's where my ball's gonna go." That's the excitement that had been missing for a long time, and this city has always loved its Dodgers, but never so much more since you came, and you reignited that torch that burned in all of us to have championship teams. So thank you for that, God love you. We, El Angelinos owe you so much. Thank you so much.
Mr. Corretts. Mr. Corretts.
Well, Justin, you know you're my favorite Dodger, and there are many reasons for that. I think Paul Krikorian gave most of the best one, which is, you've got to be the grittiest player, you fought your way up all the way through, and even when you came to LA, I don't think you were originally supposed to be a starter necessarily. People don't remember that. They're like, "Well, maybe he'll platoon, maybe he'll be on the bench." And you wound up being our best player the whole time you've been here. It's just been amazing to watch. And you're also my favorite player because of all the great stuff you've done in the community. You don't just play, you care about things off the field, you care about the community, you care about helping kids. So it's just a great honor to have you here. Um, and you obviously are honored enough because you have your beard really nicely trimmed. I don't think I've seen that before, but, uh, congratulations, thank you for being here. We hope you're here for many years to come, and that next year, you bring us a World Series this time.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's give it up for Justin Turner. The mic is yours, sir.
Wow. Um, I have some stuff written down, that's just gonna be tough to follow all those kind words. Thank you guys so much, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Councilman, Councilmember Sadio, uh, for hosting me and Courtney in this incredible honor. Uh, we are both humbled and grateful to be recognized here today among such extraordinary group, uh, leaders of our community. Um, I have the great fortune of doing something that I love for a living and calling Dodger Stadium my home, and I can say wholeheartedly that Dodger fans are the most loyal and enthusiastic fans in all of baseball, and whenever I step up to the plate, I can feel their love and support all the way up into the top deck. I, I truly do feel your guys' energy and passion, so thank you for that. Uh, so for me, giving back to the community and being a part of it as much as I can, uh, is the least I can do, to say thank you to, to all the great Dodger fans out there, not just here in Los Angeles, but across the country and around the world. It's, it's truly a, a well-represented organization, and, uh, I don't think there's a better one in the world, so, uh, grateful to be a part of it. Um, I find so much strength in this community and believe through serving that we can grow even stronger. We all have a stake in one another and a duty to take care of each other, even through the smallest of acts. We can improve the lives of others and help strengthen the bonds that make us a community. Although I talk a lot about our platform and, and how lucky I am to be able to utilize it, to make a, a difference, I think that every single person has their own platform, and, and by using acts of kindness and, and serving one another and helping lift each other up, uh, you know, every person has their own platform and can make a difference in this world, so I encourage everyone, every day, to go out, reach out, pick someone up, help someone out, open a door, say thank you, give them a smile, and just make our city, our world, a better place. I would like to thank each and every one of you council members, uh, all the kind words that you just gave Court and I, uh, couldn't be more humbled right now in this moment, it's, it's incredible. Uh, the stuff that we do off the field in the community, uh, isn't meant for this, we're not looking for recognition, I don't even think that, uh, it's fair to be recognized. I think that it's our, our duty and our, our, uh, job to go out and to give back and, and to try to make an impact. So, uh, although, uh, I don't believe this is necessary, I do want to say thank you for recognizing us. I think it's important, um, you know, especially for, for Courtney to be recognized. I get a lot of the attention, I get a lot of, uh, the fame and all this, but honestly, there would be none of this without Court. Uh, she is the backbone of our foundation, of our, of our marriage and everything that we do, so I want to thank her personally for everything. Uh, there's also someone else in here who's already been mentioned that I want to, uh, point out and thank, Clint Carlton, uh, who helps Court and I run our foundation. He's also, uh, a big part of the Dream Center, who is one of our, uh, partners in everything we do. Uh, without Pastor Matthew Barnett, the Dream Center, Clint Carlton, um, you know, we wouldn't be standing here being honored today. They kind of helped us, show us the ropes on how to serve, how to reach out, how to be involved in the community. They give us so many chances, so many opportunities, uh, to go out and, and make a difference in people's lives, so, uh, I, I want to make sure I thank them for everything as well. Thanks, Clint. And then also the, the Dodgers. Uh, I was so lucky to, six years ago, be, become a member of the Los Angeles Dodgers, uh, not only because I grew up in, in Los Angeles and, uh, you know, my whole family was die-hard Dodger fans, but, uh, to come to such a great organization who does take pride in their community and getting out and getting involved and trying to make a difference. And, uh, Naomi Rodriguez is here right now, and I want to give her a big thank you for everything that she does, including us, and, and making sure, you know, we have every opportunity and, and every moment we have to, to get out in the community. and, and every moment we have to, to get out in the community. It's all set up by, by our wonderful organization and Naomi's the head of that, so thank you, Naomi. Oh, I kind of got off track here. Back to the council members, again, thank you for having me today. You are our community leaders that have earned Los Angeles its nickname, the City of Angels, and the city that I am proud to call home. So, one last time, thank you for this honor. Court and I are truly humbled to be up here and, go Dodgers.
Let's give it up for Courtney and Justin. Thank you, guys. Ladies and gentlemen, if we could have you come on back this way.
Hey, Marco, this guy, why are these guys here? Okay, never mind. No, no, but these guys are here. You see, these guys are here. Go back that way.
You want them this way?
Yeah, yeah, this way.
We're gonna go to the back.
Hey, Al, stop them going that way, get this one. You gotta tell them to stop this one.
Go ahead and move it.
Yeah, everybody knows.
Okay, Madam Clerk, why don't we vote on item 28 as amended?
And, Mr. President, for the record, the amending motion has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Thank you. Then if we could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Let's now take up item 31. It's a substitute motion, so we'll need, I believe, Madam Clerk, two votes on this. How does it work?
That is correct. The first vote is on whether to substitute.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That's approved, so now let's actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Items, uh, let's take up items 15 through 27. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
I believe at this point, we can take up items 29, 30, 32, and 33. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Uh, number 24 and 26 requesting to be forthwith.
Okay, so order.
And, Mr. President, there's also a request to send 25 forthwith.
And we'll do that one as well. Okay, let's now take item 13. On 13, let's open. Okay, let's combine and we'll scratch the 13. We've got to circulate that. Okay, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna take some public comment on this, one minute each, starting with Kate Spear, Alicia Bell, Josh Gray, Emmer, Leo Pragaman, Nicole, please just come on forward. Shaheen, I won't let you say that, Gilbert Smith. Okay, identify yourself, one minute, you start.
My name is Kate Spear and I'm speaking today on behalf of Unite Here Local 11. We speak in support of the proposed Crossroads Development Project. The developers have responded to community feedback by improving the project in a number of ways to eliminate adverse environmental impacts and to better align the project with the needs and desires of the community. For example, the developer proposed the inclusion of the Hollywood Reporter Building as an LA historical cultural monument and the addition of affordable residential apartments, resulting in 105 total affordable units. Adding affordable housing is a significant goal of our membership, who urgently need more affordable housing and who especially need it near hospitality job sites so they can live near where they work. The developer also has committed both to a reduction of hotel building height from 31 stories to 26 stories and to the replacement of a initially proposed street alignment. We want to acknowledge developers that work with the community and respond to their concerns, and that is why we would support the project.
Thank you, next. Identify yourself, sir.
Josh Gray Emmer, representing Abundant Housing here today, 2,000-strong volunteer organization. We support this project, thank you.
Thank you, next.
Good morning, Nicole Shaheenian with the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the chamber, I am here to express our strong support of the proposed Crossroads Project, which will bring much-needed housing, hotel rooms, and commercial space to an area with a need for revitalization. As you know, LA and Hollywood have seen a steady rise in tourism, which has escalated the need for hotel rooms. We are very excited to see that this project addresses this need through the construction of a 305-room hotel. Additionally, the chamber recognizes the extreme need for more housing stock as the city continues to grapple with an affordable housing crisis. We support the efforts of this developer to provide much-needed market rate and affordable housing for those living and working in our community. This project will radically revitalize the area, not only with the addition of housing and the hotel, but through the construction of a bustling entertainment and retail district. We ask that you move this project forward, thank you.
Thank you. And as the next speaker's coming forward, I'm looking for Alfredo Hernandez. I have two Alexes, Alex Masachi, Alex M., Shamari Davis, and Gilbert Smith. Yes, sir, identify.
I'm Gilbert Smith. And I am president of the Ricardo Montebon Theater and Hollywood on Vine Street. And thank you, members, for allowing me to speak today. I'm in very strong support of the Crossroads Project. It is very rare to have the opportunity to vote large projects forward, like the W Hotel, this Hollywood Central Park, and Crossroads being one of those projects that's gonna be transformative to our beautiful city. It is a master plan, it is very sensitive to all the issues that we're looking to complete the cycles of transportation and homeownership and a, a city that has a vibrancy that doesn't just depend upon the car. It depends on the city and the dwellings within it. And thank you, the, it is the entertainment capital of the world, it's gonna create a lot of entertainment, jobs, construction jobs, and eliminate transportation because people will be living and working in Hollywood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, my name is Alicia Bell, I'm the Director of Development for Blessed Sacrament School, and we are pleased to support the Crossroads Project. This project is designed to preserve, complement, and highlight crossroads of the world and Blessed Sacrament by creating extensive and inviting open spaces that will greatly enhance the pedestrian experience for the Blessed Sacrament community. The project will define a new sense of place for our church and for Hollywood, and we strongly believe that this development deserves your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Father Leo Pragaman, I'm from Blessed Sacrament Church, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Crossroads Project also. We wouldn't be associated with any project unless it was a benefit to everyone. And the heritage group that we work with has made absolutely every effort to provide jobs and low-cost housing, and we think that there's, this has something for everyone in the city, and we ask for your support for the project.
Thank you. Identify yourself.
Good morning, council members, I am Alfredo Hernandez, Executive Director of the Hollywood Media District Bid. Our Board of Directors voted unanimously to support this project. Crossroads Hollywood is a catalytic project that continues to revitalize Hollywood by providing jobs, housing, and stimulating our economy through increased tax and tourism dollars. This project provides new revenue streams that will generate millions of recurring dollars to the city, which pays for police, fire, and filling potholes. On behalf of the Hollywood Media District Bid, I ask that you join us in supporting this very important project.
Thank you. Ron, you want to come on up too? Ron Miller? Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Alex Masachi, Executive Vice President of MCAP Partners. My family are longtime Hollywood property owners. My uncle Jacques Masachi is a former CHNC Board Member and current Hollywood Media District Bid Board Member. We're very excited about this project. The developer took great care in the design to both celebrate Hollywood and its history and to respect the neighborhood. The applicant's extensive community outreach during the past three and a half years has led to a project that incorporates community goals and objectives. This is a project we can all be proud of, I ask for your support, thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a Kendra Casper? If so, come on up. Hey.
Good morning, good morning. Shamari Davis with IBW Local 11 Electricians Union, about 12,000 members within the Los Angeles County area, and we strongly support Crossroads of the World Project. It's a great project, they have made a agreement with the trades, and so we're gonna provide a lot of great careers for Los Angelenos, so we urge your support, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Good morning, I'm Ron Miller, Executive Secretary of the LA Orange County Building Trades. Here on behalf of the 140,000 hard-working men and women in LA and Orange County, just want to show our support for the project. Like Shamari said, it's gonna give us another opportunity to put local people to work, help drive the economy of Los Angeles. So please support the project, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herman, you're after this young lady here. Yes, ma'am, identify yourself.
Good morning, Kendra Casper, DLA Piper, I represent the applicant. I'm just saying that I'm here today to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Shut it down. Why am I yelling out? Because I'm not. I'm trying to address Section 6085 for the record, that the city attorney, due to his liability and poor interest to effectuate, that's right, Mr. Fabel, you, Mr. Keebler.
Mr. Herman, no, no, you're off, you're off topic, Mr. Herman. Get on topic.
I'm dealing with the impact report regarding our quality of life, and the budget in my hand reflects that, as I brought it to your attention last week.
Okay, Mr. Herman, you're not on topic, you can sit down, thank you. All right, let's prepare to vote on it. Mr. Herman, you are not on topic, now you're disrupting the meeting, please take a seat. Okay, let's prepare to, um, let us prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, that's approved. Let's now vote on items one through three. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now let's vote on items, item 12 as amended.
And, Mr. President, there is an amending motion that has been posted and distributed on this item.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian.
I actually didn't see the, see it, I had planned to do it orally, but...
I believe this is a separate amending motion.
Ah, okay, okay. So I have, I have my own then as well, Mr. President.
Oh, we'll go right ahead.
I'd like to request an amendment to item 12 to add a 10th recommendation to read as follows. Ten, instruct the CLA with the assistance of the CIO to report to the Budget and Finance Committee by March 31st relative to future costs associated with the various capital projects and other programs implemented with the adoption of the Homeless Strategy Committee Report.
Okay, that'll be incorporated. Let's prepare to vote on that item as amended. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Herman, you're disrupting this meeting, public comment is over with. Now let's move to items 13. Oh, on that item, let's call the roll, open the roll.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, 12 ayes. Ms. Martinez.
President, can we send item 12 forthwith for Mr. O'Farrell?
Forthwith, so ordered.
Thanks.
And for the record, that was 13 ayes.
Okay, now let's go to item 13.
And an amending motion has been posted and distributed for item 13.
Okay, let's open on the amendment, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And now let's vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Um, on item 14, I believe a motion is required.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Yes, on, on 14A, if we could receive and file as its owner occupied.
And I'll second if it needs a second. So let us, on that item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us, council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted, they're referred. Announcements, members? No announcements, if all would please rise for adjourning motions? If all in this chamber would please rise for adjourning motions? I'd like to recognize Mr. Bloomingfield. I'd like to recognize Mr. Bloomingfield at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past weekend, we lost a friend, someone who has been on my team for literally over 10 years. ten years. A lot of you around this horseshoe know her. In fact, I don't know how you can be involved in politics, certainly Democratic politics, and not cross paths with her. My team and I had the gift of working with her day in and day out. I'm talking about my District Director, Lynn Shaw-Helfenhouse. Before joining my team in, in two thousand eight, or I should say formally joining, we were friends, and, and she was part of the team, and I was part of her team before then. She was a lifelong Democrat. In fact, in many ways, she was, she was born into activist and union politics from the womb. Her father was a union carpenter. Her mother represented engineers and scientists at Lockheed Martin. Uh, you know, she would talk about, at an early age, you know, her, some of her early memories were, were on picket lines and, and those kinds of things. And she had public service, was part of her blood. In fact, those of us who knew her, her mother Lois, who passed away just a couple of years ago, um, was, was also active way into her, into her life. She worked on George McGovern's campaign in nineteen seventy-two, and she was so involved in the Democratic Party. I mean, she was the Chair of the Women's Caucus. She was involved in DIPSEV, the Democratic Party of the San Fernando Valley. She had a dozen different leadership positions, being on the E-Board. Um, in fact, some of you may remember, she actually got married at a Democratic Convention in two thousand. Her, uh, she and her husband Jim, um, you know, were such stalwarts in the party that they actually chose to do their marriage at a Democratic Convention, and that is dedication. Her career, uh, before ever working for me, was, was extensive. She was in the private sector. She worked for a number of nonprofits. She worked for Tierra del Sol, which was an organization that dealt with the developmentally disabled, and she, she worked for them and carried those issues. I mean, that became a big part of my platform as an assembly person in particular. And it wasn't that I had any connection to that, but it was Lynn's passion that, that drove that, and we were able to do a self-determination bill, which is, which was historic, adult, helped prevent Adult Day healthcare from being eliminated, and she was really a drive for that. In many ways, she was, she was the conscience of, of my team in so many respects. She was, she was a mother hen for our team. She was a firebrand. She was really the glue that kept folks together. This is tough. She, she valiantly battled pancreatic cancer for a year or more. She was on medical leave for the last year. And it was tough for her. She would ride that cancer roller coaster, and sometimes she'd come into the office, and sometimes she just couldn't. I don't know if, you know, today we passed a motion to name the Community Room in the West Valley Municipal Building after Lynn Shaw. I really hoped that we could do that while she was alive, but weren't able to do it. So she's survived by her husband Jim, their pugs, Lily and Otis, her extended family with Team Bloomingfield. May she rest in peace.
Bob, I know that's emotional for you, and that was well, well said. If there was one person that could, I'll, I'll use the word calm Jim down, it, it, it was her. And, um, even though we kinda knew it was coming, it doesn't make it any easier. They're, they're just two phenomenal people, and I, everybody should reach out and try to touch Jim and help him get through this moment. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Buscaino?
I think they want to speak.
One second. Ms. Martinez, did you wanna?
Yes, my condolences to you, Bob, and your entire staff, and, and Jim. I just wanna say a few words about Lynn. Many of you might not know this, but I met her in nineteen ninety-eight, working in a little campaign in the San Fernando Valley. We weren't supposed to win, and her and her mother, Lois, walked into the campaign office, and I'll never forget, I think that at the time, not one single Democratic Party was endorsing our candidate except for Lynn and her mother. And I still remember the backlash that they both got, but her mom was such a fighter and such a believer in what we were trying to do, um, and they stuck with us. And I'll never forget, um, her mother standing up for what she thought was right, and Lynn, and Lynn and my husband and I became really good friends, um, after that campaign in nineteen ninety-eight. We'll never forget how incredibly passionate she was about the Democratic Party when she married Jim at the Democratic Convention, but more than anything, I think she was someone that was honest, um, and someone who was a true believer in what we were trying to do. So we're gonna miss her. Great job, my friend. I think she's gonna be missed, and, um, my heart goes out to Jim.
Mr. Corcoran.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Nury. I've known Lynn for almost thirty years, and there has not been a tough fight that I've had in my whole life since then, that Lynn has not been shoulder-to-shoulder fighting in the trenches, um, with me, each and every step of that way. And she, um, she, as, as Ms. Martinez said, she was, I think, um, really well-known for taking on tough causes, sometimes lost causes, and never flinching, and always doing it with good humor and in a way that brought others along with her. And I think she brought that, that same attitude to her final fight against her cancer, and inspired so many of us and others who, who saw her battling and saw her never, ever quitting. And Bob, I'm so grateful to you and your staff for naming the Community Room after Lynn, and I hope that everybody who ever sees that will remember the spirit that she brought to her service, um, to the public, to her political wars that she always fought, and to the final fight that she fought against cancer as well. And you can't talk about Lynn without also talking about Lois. You're absolutely right, Nury. I remember in my, my first unsuccessful campaign for the State Assembly in two thousand, Lois got mad at something that happened in a Democratic club. I'll spare you the details, but she confronted my opponent with her cane and was pointing that cane at him, and I thought there was gonna be an assault with a deadly weapon, really. I thought that that cane would become, would become a weapon, and, and he was intimidated as he should have been, because all of us, if you, if you weren't, if you didn't have Lois and Lynn as your friends, God help you. And I, I am so grateful that I had the opportunity in my life to call them both friends. They've certainly enriched my life, and they've enriched the entire community and city as well. So may she rest in peace.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bob, my heart goes out to you and your team. I know Lynn was a very special member of your family as well, um, and she gave it a really great fight. Uh, you know, I, I think it just speaks to the spirit that she had. She, this lady would take on the toughest challenges head-on, and I think to, to what everyone has said about Lynn, I mean, I was grateful to know her. She and Jim have both been really good friends, and I'm appreciative of knowing them both, but she had an incredible sense of humor, and, but she fought one of the most aggressive forms of cancer, and given how long she lasted, it's, I mean, it, I think it speaks true to her spirit and the character of who she was, and she would just fight everything with every ounce of her being, and so I, my heart goes out to everyone, because I know her, we are all gonna feel a void because of Lynn's passing, so may she rest in peace.
Well said. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you. Great tribute to Lynn, Bob, and our hearts and prayers and thoughts go with her and her entire family. In fact, we also lost another incredible Democratic activist and municipal leader, as I mentioned, I broke the news last week, the Mayor Greg Pettis of Cathedral City. In fact, I'm thinking that Greg and Lynn are mobilizing and, um, organizing up in the heavens today. Greg Pettis, I have, I have a profound respect and love for the last several years, and his relationship with the Southern California Association of Governments and SCAG and National League of Cities, the Democratic Municipal Officials, just to name a few of some of the organizations he was heavily involved in. Passed away at the age sixty-three from complications stemming from a two thousand eighteen gastric bypass surgery. Greg Pettis was first elected in nineteen ninety-four. He was the city's longest-serving council member and the city's first openly gay public servant. Mayor Pettis was a tireless champion for youth, the environment, the homeless, the LGBTQ community, his constituencies, and his beloved city. Prominent Democratic activist in the Coachella Valley, once served as Chair, President of the Southern California Association of Governments. Mayor Pettis also received the Democratic National Committee appointment through the Democratic Municipal Officials, the DMO, to be one of seventy-five California Superdelegates to the Democratic National Convention in two thousand sixteen. He will dearly be missed by Cathedral City and municipal leaders across the country who have had the privilege to work alongside him. I last saw him at the NLC City Summit here in Los Angeles, um, and there he reaffirmed his commitment to local government, although he didn't look at the best of health, but he was always wanting to get to yes and wanting to be involved in committees and being an activist, not only for his city, for our state, and for our country. We will miss Mayor Greg Pettis. Thank you.
Mr. Corret.
If I could, a microphone? There we go. I also wanted to acknowledge Greg Pettis. I knew him since his election in nineteen ninety-four, because West Hollywood was obviously well-associated with LGBT issues, and I worked together with him on, on some of those issues back when there were still very few openly gay or lesbian elected officials anywhere in the country. He was still one of the groundbreakers, and he also came to L.A. frequently, including for fundraising events, 'cause he had a lot of friends and supporters here in L.A., and I would always attend those events and try to support him any way I could. He was a great guy and a great leader and did a lot for Cathedral City and beyond, and, you know, a tragic loss, and he'll be sorely missed.
Well said. Any other adjourning motions? I don't see any. Do we have anybody in the audience by the name of Terry or Tyree that I didn't call on to speak? Obviously not. Okay, members, this meeting's adjourned.
Wilmington and San Pedro have always been the gateway to Catalina since back in the late eighteen hundreds. My father, myself, and a friend of mine started Catalina Express, along with my brother Tim, in nineteen eighty-one, and we came in to actually replace the seaplanes that were at that point going out of service. So what we needed to do was replace that service with fast boats. So we went out, we bought one boat...